Maggie?
Maggie.
Oh, Maggie, what's your name?
Maggie.
I call to order the September 23, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education being held today at the lovely Clifton Area Neighborhood School, also known as CANS. We welcome, we welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Powers?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
President John, I'm sorry, Mr. Morosky? President John?
Here, thank you. I need a motion to revise the agenda to add special appreciation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent, please do the honors.
Yes. We are extremely excited to be here this evening in this brand-new school. We opened two new schools this year, and this is one of them. I'd like to ask Mr. James Zoller to come forward. He is the principal of this school. He is so proud of his school and all the wonderful kids who are here, and they actually provided a tour for us. And right before James speaks, I would like to also acknowledge all of the parents and community members who worked on this project for years. Would you please stand and be acknowledged? So, the day has come. You have this beautiful, wonderful school. We can't thank you enough for all of the work that you put into making this happen. We're so excited for you. And, James?
Yes, thank you Superintendent Mitchell, and thank you board for visiting us here at CANS, our new home. I think it's very fitting Superintendent Mitchell that you recognize our community that's here. Obviously, I'm not here alone this evening, and I think that's a perfect ode to CANS and its origin, and the energy and the spirit. So I too want to thank the community members. I also want to thank the members of my staff that are here, because I think it's the vision of all the parties, all the members of the CANS community, that truly make this school very special. We've come a long way in a very short period of time, but we have high ambitions as well, and so we're very excited about the year, very excited about the projects that are underway, and are looking forward to great success in the future. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Before we move on the agenda, just any acknowledgements from the board, real quickly, before we move on. I just want to say thank you all for being here. I think of all the school sites, this is probably the one where it's the, a large number of folks who attend, but we are always appreciative of the community coming out to participate in the meetings with us, and we thank you for being here again. Okay, moving on, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, September 16, 2019, and the regular meeting, September 16, 2019. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Mrs. Bolton, Ms. Bolton, please present the September 12, 2019 Student Achievement Minutes.
Thank you, Madam President, happy to do so. We again had a pretty large crowd for student achievement, and one of the very first things that was on the agenda is a continuation of a previous agenda item several months ago that's been brought to the board, and also a year or so ago as well, and that is the need and the wish by the Hyde Park School LSDMC for us to begin to think about how they can have an expanded footprint, if you will, an additional space, gymnasium, cafeteria. And if you will recall, some year or so ago, year and a half ago, they presented even a rendering of what it could possibly look like. It is an issue that is very prevalent both on our west side and our east side, where even after the taxpayers have spent, and thank goodness they did, the $1.2 billion, our enrollment growing as quickly as it is growing is causing the need for us to reconsider an additional kind of growth plan, which is part of our strategic plan. So we thank them for bringing that and encourage them to keep bringing it to the whole board as well, just for student achievement. We also heard a report from Assistant Superintendent Murphy regarding the several, actually four, LSDMC quarterly district meetings, when they would occur, and some of the topics that will be discussed. It is also part of the reset that began two years ago regarding our LSDMCs, and as institutions or structures, our LSDMCs are nearly 40 years old now, and so that causes a reset to a certain extent, and that's what's been going on. We also, we've got a report from the President of CFT about what the start dates and end dates might be regarding our negotiations in the master contract and collective bargaining for CFT, because it needs to be told to the public so that we do our, the people's business in public. We also continued an effort that was long been an issue for us, and we've had some great success over time, and that is moving toward a more equitable distribution of advanced placement courses throughout our high schools. And we've made some great successes and great strides, but continue to do it, and the superintendent and the administration has presented to us kind of an overview of where we are and some aspects of where we still need to go to make it even more equitable for all of our students. To that dual, to that issue, we also heard a report regarding College Credit Plus, dual enrollment, and other kinds of things regarding post-K-12. Indeed, the district is a PK-16 district, as it's beginning to happen now, and that is, as all of you know, is quite important and significant. We heard also, and made the determination, that the Student Achievement Safety Subcommittee would be not only formed, but indeed would incorporate our Youth Advisory Safety Committee as well, and also work in association with the City Safety Committee, and you'll see some of the products of all of that very shortly, but mostly it'll be dealing with the safe routes to school and Division Zero that we will be talking about later. Also, again, had a report that all of our high schools have been accredited through Advanced Ed, and that's pretty remarkable for an urban district. We also got the results regarding the air testing, and also heard a little bit more about our graduation rates and what that means, and that that's an uptick in the graduation rate. They also, very quickly, and we can do more of an update later in the meeting, but reported on the efforts by some of the urban districts to reform the report card by the state. Also heard an update regarding the celebration that we've experienced today and tonight regarding our community learning centers. And had a short report on this new alliance, if you will, between the park board and the school board, and what that may mean as part of our strategic plan. We also had a clarification issue, if you will, regarding neighborhood boundary lines, and then also based upon some teacher concerns, and certainly based upon some student concerns, dealt with the copy clicks, if you will, as well as access to printers in some of our high schools, and then also registered with the administration, and some of the things we've heard from the community, some concerns about a whole week of school at the beginning of the, of the year. And then also reported that indeed the State Department of Ed and others have, and we are now a pilot for the new Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, and wanted to get a bit of an update perhaps in next month as to how well or quickly that's being implemented. Thank you. I submit in hope for approval.
Thank you. Board member, questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Thank you for that update. The one that I'm interested in is the neighborhood boundary lines conversation, in that it perhaps ladders to a much bigger issue that we need to address in the district, which is our continuously skyrocketing transportation costs, and frankly, the complexity that our completely open enrollment, whereby you can live anywhere throughout the entire district and go to any school. As we saw last year during our Transportation Summit, this really gave some insight to just how, how diverse each and every school was pulling as you look through the neighborhood, or I'm sorry, the neighborhoods and the municipalities that are part of the district. There was some talk that we could, at the same time we looked at neighborhood boundary lines, potentially explore zones. We would still have the opportunity for choice, but it would be more confined in zones so as to mitigate somebody going from Cheviot to Riverside East, and I think that was a real scenario, or Westwood to Riverside East. It would allow us to control costs and minimize time. So is that still part of this discussion? How will that, how will that take place?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, Ms. Bolton.
Mr. Messer, you're absolutely right. We're actually sitting in the building that began this dialogue almost now four years ago regarding kind of what is old is new again, where indeed the boundary lines for CANS actually match the neighborhood boundary lines that, of the neighborhoods that it serves, whether it's Cuff or Clifton or Spring Grove Village, and that determination of what those boundary lines would be, first of all, then kind of created this sense in this talk as to how does that change the boundary lines that are close to it or around, particularly the north-central corridor of our district. That is still major conversation, and indeed, I think in the Policy Committee last year, it was discussed also as we deal with overcrowding regarding Pleasant Ridge, Montessori, and some of the east side issues that have to be dealt with. We've dealt with the, one of the major issues over on the west side with the purchase of the Mercy property and campus that then freed up the Gamble High School building for literally the waiting list for, I think it was Dater, and I think, I think overnight the superintendent and staff filled that building. So it is all part of that, and from a transportation part, if we equalize the facilities, if we provide the same quality of facilities on east side and west side, then indeed, we do need to have a chance to talk about how expensive is choice, and how can we match some of the needs that parents have expressed, and the programming that is needed to be balanced on both sides of town.
Okay. Ms. Powers, and then I also have a comment, and then Mr. Messer.
I think that would be beneficial and very good to look at, especially for elementary. My concern would be the high schools changing the boundary lines and making them what used to be neighborhood high schools, and I would be concerned about having not as diverse high schools, more segregated high schools, and more neighborhood, against neighborhood in that retrospect. So I will have concerns around that versus the elementary school, which I think is really a good idea.
Mr. Messer, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, so I think I totally agree with all these, there's lots, complex and that whole thing. Is this a formalized assignment that the administration is working towards, something that we would then be reviewing with the kind of high-level goals, we want to maintain our diversity within our schools and blah blah? Is that a project that is scoped so that it will go in effect in 2021 school year? Or where does that sit today?
Well, if I could insert a comment, and Ms. Bates, you also have a comment. That is actually, I think when I read the minutes, there were a number of things that came to my mind about how huge all of this is, and I know that all of these are very important considerations, and, and my observation, not a criticism, but my observation, especially looking at the entire student achievement work plan, is that my concern is, are we taking on so much that feel like pieces coming together instead of looking at a bigger picture and prioritizing what we can realistically do and in what timeframe? And so that, and I was thinking about that exact thing, the boundary lines, the transportation changes, the now, you know, we, we have Hyde Park and legitimately so, there are legitimate concerns about that building being overcrowded, but there are legitimate concerns about lots of our buildings. And I would much rather have a dialogue, I mean, anybody can come and express their interest in wanting to expand their schools, I respect that, but we need to do it in a systemic and very strategic way. So my concern, and I was actually gonna mention tonight or suggest that maybe we have this conversation as part of a board matters conversation, especially around the boundary situation and that, so we might do that, because I know we're just responding to the minutes tonight, but we might want to think about having a more robust conversation about that. Ms. Bates?
And I don't think we can talk about boundaries without talking about program, because one of the reasons we went to the schools of choice, so I'm the one with the institutional memory as to why we did this in the beginning, is for economy of scale. So it's much more reasonable to have, you know, the, the construction sciences at Woodward and culinary arts out on the west side than to have it at every single school to provide equity. So I would, I would recommend that when we have that conversation, we, we don't do it in the absence of programming, because we may be solving the transportation problem, but then our costs may be really blooming with the expansion of, of programming to make sure that the, what is available to our students throughout the district is equitable.
Madam Chair, if I could, I think everybody's, I like this, everybody's right. And what works for me is that I think it is a full board effort. I think also the whole board should be able to give the administration some parameters of concerns or goals or thoughts, and I know the administration, as part of the strategic plan, is dealing with growth, and the growth piece is not just facilities or enrollment, but it is programming, and it is about in part transportation, and at least the optimizing our operations is. So I, again, I would suggest that rather than the board matters, the whole board, I think it would be great to have sort of an opening discussion about this related to the strategic plan, perhaps even at our work session that Saturday.
That's exactly what we were just talking about. That would be a great format and venue to do it in, is our executive session on October 19th, which is a public session, by the way.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else regarding the great student achievement report?
Once again, I would like to thank the administration. We keep them really working hard for us, and they are very patient with us.
The student achievement keeps them hopping, let's just.
It's the sack pack.
Sack pack.
Sack pack.
Sack pack. Okay, thank you. So are you moving to introduce the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry, the minutes are accepted. Okay, so we're moving on to the presentations. We made a slight revision, so I'm gonna ask Superintendent to do our, the first, where we inserted the acknowledgement or the recognition?
Yes. We recognize every day that Cincinnati Public Schools, we could not do our work without the help of all of our partners who come around the table to provide services for our kids each and every day, that far extends beyond teaching, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. And so it would be remiss of us not to thank all of those partnerships who help us every day to make sure that our kids are enabled to receive the great education that they're receiving within our district. And so I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy to come forward, and she's going to present some recognitions to our resource coordinators who work on behalf of our kids every day. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tess, thank you for this opportunity. I am very excited to be able to uplift our wonderful partners and our resource coordinators, our community learning centers, and our lead agencies. If you don't mind, I'm gonna ask our CLC manager, Ms. Ephy Bell, if she would join me, but I do have this amazing celebration to share. This is a proclamation from the City of Cincinnati. It reads, be it proclaimed, whereas the Cincinnati Public School District is celebrating Community Learning Center Appreciation Week in September, and whereas Community Learning Center Resource Coordinators are dedicated to helping Cincinnati Public Schools students and families thrive, and whereas Community Learning Center Resource Coordinators support Cincinnati Public Schools students and families by transforming schools into neighborhood hubs that serve students, families, and the community in many important ways. And whereas Community Learning Center Resource Coordinators partner with more than 700 organizations to serve the needs of more than 36,000 Cincinnati Public Schools students, and whereas the 44 Community Learning Center Resource Coordinators are hardworking, dedicated, public servants that create strong, purposeful bonds between schools and communities, and whereas the City of Cincinnati appreciates the hard work and dedication displayed every day by the Community Learning Center Resource Coordinators. Now, therefore, I, John Cranley, Mayor of the City of Cincinnati, do hereby proclaim September 23, 2019, as Community Learning Center Appreciation Day in the City of Cincinnati. September 23rd, 2019, as Community Learning Center Appreciation Day in the city of Cincinnati."
Wonderful.
Thank you. So in celebration of Community Learning Center Appreciation Week, which is done in conjunction with the Institute for Educational Leadership's National Coordinators Week, we wanted to recognize those resource coordinators who have been dedicated and committed to this work for over 10 years. So the board policy for community learning centers was passed back in 2001, and in 2009, the board policy called out resource coordinators as part of that policy. And tonight, we have eight resource coordinators who have provided more than 80 years of service and dedication to this work combined. And so we're going to present them tonight with a trophy plaque for their hard work and dedication, and we're gonna ask for them to come forward with their principal or lead agency that is with them tonight. We also honor all of the ecosystem that supports this amazing work to echo Superintendent Mitchell, our, our lead agencies, our principals, our teachers, our staff, our community councils, LSCMCs, our network, and the 700-plus partners that are serving our amazing students and families in this district. And so we're gonna start off with Corey Parker. He is the resource coordinator at Roehill Elementary, and he is employed by Grad Cincinnati. And so here is an example. I'm, I'm going to bring this up a little closer. Actually, I'm gonna get a Vanuah to help me bring it up a little closer to the stage so that the board members can see it. Thank you. All right. Up next, we have, I'm sorry, my phone locked, and I lost my picture. Angela Campbell Harris with Western High University with Grad Cincinnati. Jamie Harris-Lugan with Euler School with Community Learning Center Institute. Pamela Knox, John P. Parker School. Monica Keenan, Ethel Taylor Academy, Grad Cincinnati. Leslie Henry, Bonne Hill Academy, Families Forward. Shane Fletcher with Pleasant Hill Elementary, Gaskins Foundation. And our last resource coordinator is Deb Chambers with Hartwell Elementary School, and she was not able to be here tonight. We want to say thank you and congratulations to the amazing work that you all have done for your dedication, your commitment, and your smiles. We so appreciate your love and your grace and the thankless things that you do that we don't always see. Thank you again.
Thank you. While, while our resource coordinators are still here, do, do, all right, there you go. Yay! Okay, board members, do board members have comments, additional comments before they take off? Mr. Davis?
I just have a quick thank you to all the resource coordinators. The work of the schoolhouse could not get done without you, and the efforts of student achievement could not get done without you. You are an integral part of every day in that building and, and in our communities, and I just want to say thank you.
And I think he speaks for all of us. You guys do great work in linking us, linking the students and families to community and that sense of community. So we're very proud of, to have you amidst us and helping and supporting as part of the district. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll, we'll move on to the next presentation. Ms. Bates, Ms. Bates, as a former member of the Ohio School Board Association Board of Trustees, please present our presentation for the evening.
Should I present? All right, I would like to invite up two friends of mine, Mr. Rick. All of ours. But we have Mr. Rick Lewis, the OSBA Executive Director, and Ron Diver, who is our Executive Director of our region, the southwest region, and welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name, excuse me, choking up here. My name is Rick Lewis. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of the Ohio School Boards Association. For those in our audience who are not familiar with OSBA, we're a private nonprofit association that exists only to help school boards through guidance and support. We are now in our 60, 50-year service, and we represent over 700 school boards across the state of Ohio. I want to say thank you for the time to be with you this evening. I recognize your, your agenda is a bit ambitious, I promise to keep my comments brief, but I don't want the brevity to undermine the importance of the words we have to share this evening. And I think in today's society, far too often, hard work, dedication to excellence, is taken for granted. It's become the expected, and it often goes unthanked and unrecognized and unappreciated. And that should not be the case. And that's why Ron and I are here this evening. Public service as a school board member is a very difficult task. For those who believe it's just taking one or two hours a month to, to go to a public meeting, you seriously underestimate the work that these ladies and gentlemen put into the job. It takes a great deal of training, it takes a great deal of sacrifice of personal time, time away from their jobs, time away from their families, and, and time that they're laboring on behalf of other people's children. The rewards are few. It's certainly not for the pay. I can tell you, there has to be an easier way to make $100 a month. But I know at the end of the day, every one of these men and women want the same thing. They want their schools a better place to, to learn, and they want this community a better place to live. Now, our association hopes, helps school board members across the state in a myriad of ways, but everything that we do, everything, every service that we offer, every legacy of belief that we hold dear, everything that we believe in is governed by school board members, the 3,500 school board members from around the state. And we're very fortunate to have 32 school board members. These are the leaders of the leaders who've been selected by their peers to lead our organization. We are very fortunate that Cincinnati has shared again one of your own with the Ohio School Boards Association. And tonight, I'd like to say thank you to Carolyn Jones for her service on the OSBA Board of Directors. Now, we'll have a plaque to present to you in a moment, but there are a few other things. Cincinnati has, has always been the cradle of board leadership, I believe, for the Ohio School Boards Association. I can't remember a time that Cincinnati hasn't shared one of its own with OSBA to help not just the children of the Cincinnati Public Schools, but to help the nearly 2 million students across the state of, across this great state. Now, Ms. Jones, in her many years of service, I believe 10, 11 years of service now, has labored intensely here in Cincinnati. You know, she's been your board vice president, she's been your board president, she serves as a delegate to the OSBA Business Meeting, she serves as your liaison to the state when it comes down to student achievement, and she's given her time and energies to the region as well, and Ron will talk about that in just a moment. At the state level, she works tirelessly on our Board of Directors, the Urban School District Advisory Network, and our Caucus of Black School Board Members. At the national level, she gives her talents and dedication, insight, and expertise to the Council of Urban Boards of Education. So again, not just working for Cincinnati or the state of Ohio, but she works for the entire nation. And on top of it all, she continually dedicates herself to self-improvement by attending our conference, our Board Leadership Institute, the National School Boards Association Conference as well, again, all taking time away from, from the personal life. We're also told, though, at day one, that there, well, I'll tell you what, I mean, this would be that great opportunity to, if, if I may approach, to present this, this plaque here on, on behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association to say thank you for all that you've done. Now, I can share with you that OSBA, you may be one of their partners, most interesting is this is a successful board member, it's when your team works together, that they're able to make possible things happen. So we also like to thank the entire board for its support of Carolyn, and for all the leadership that they give to our association as well. I know we have cast members of the board, like Melanie Batesy, Bolton's been up in Columbus the last two days trying to put together a new report card system that's gonna better off students. I'm gonna turn it to Ron, and I can take it.
Okay, thanks, Rick. In addition to all the work that Carolyn does, we know that for her to be able to do that kind of work, it needs a, a supportive board, and we just want to recognize you all for standing behind Carolyn and letting her do the work with the Ohio School Boards Association. We have a plaque here for you. As Rick mentioned, I am the region manager for the, for the southwest region of Ohio School Boards Association, and I, this is the time for a commercial. We have our fall conference on October the 10th, and I know you've been there before, and, and I don't take the registrations anymore, so I don't know whether you've signed up or not, but if you haven't, we certainly hope that you, you do come to our region conference. I'm, I'm sure you're gonna be at the Capital Conference, which is in November, but we also would like to have you as part of the region. It's gonna be at the Great Oaks Courier-Campuses up here in, on East Capo Road. It's, it's gonna be a nice night. We average over about, the last, I think our spring conference, we had 350 people, and my guess is we'll probably have over 300 for the, for the one there. But I'd like to come up as well and present this to, well, I don't know whether I could present it to Carolyn, since she's president, but I think, I think I'll present it to the vice president. Thanks to Melanie, she's done the same work as well. Yeah, I'm gonna be careful. Be careful, yes. Great. I see Eve at, at all kinds of things. I, I'm sure you're gonna be at the Capital Conference. But Eve is on the Capital Conference Planning Committee, so that's another one of your board members that's doing some good work. So she comes up and, she, she makes us stay on the straight and narrow.
Like she does us, right?
She's talented at that.
She's talented.
Once again, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening, but more importantly, thank you all, and in particular Carolyn, this evening for what you do each and every day.
Thank you, thank you so much. I, I appreciate this so much. I, I just want to say on behalf of the board, when we go up, you know, this is not just about me, or even this board. What, the work that they do is more to impact things across our state and across our country, and it's very important work. And so our board members are very much invested in what happens in the work that OSBA does. And as they stated, we attend the Capital Conference every year to, for professional development. But the work is very important, and so all the things like, like some of the agenda items on tonight, like Vision Zero and all those, those are all national kinds of concerns and issues that we need to be involved with and active with. So again, thank you all for the work that you do. We appreciate you coming down to visit with us at our new school. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, one point of personal privilege. Everybody be very, very nice to Rick, because his son is a star football player, and they are contemplating coming to UC. Whatever you do, be very nice to him, because that's the kind of folk we want to have come to UC and be a bear clan.
I had one thing, well, now that we're talking about Rick, he'll probably kill me for saying this, but he just completed in August his 35th year with the Ohio School Boards Association.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, again.
We, we have a little drive to get home, so I think we're gonna excuse ourselves if that's okay. And we all, we hope you have a great meeting. I was on the board, uh, school board for 28 years, so I know how some of them go and how, how, how they're really make you proud sometimes, and sometimes they're not quite as proud. But I hope you have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All righty, we're gonna continue with our agenda. Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes, so every board meeting, the administration will bring a presentation to the board and to the public to give an update on the implementation of the strategic plan. So we don't want to wait till the end of the first quarter to say, here are our results and the measures, but every single meeting will be brought into a presentation. So this evening, our presentation is around the health and safety goal, and Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty will be providing this presentation along with some friends.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We want to spend some time this evening talking through one of the strategic plan goals around health and safety. Joining me tonight are Carrie Bunger, Ross Turpo, and Meg Burrows, who are going to speak with us about the plans that have been put into place that will impact our students, and specifically around bullying as well, and then the results that we've had from our QI implementation at Woodford PIDEA. So as Mrs. Mitchell mentioned, tonight, we are going to be zooming in on that health and safety goal. So here to tell us more is Dr. Carrie Bunger.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope you noticed the fact that we all stood single file as good educators. We stood behind Ms. Bunty in line, showing appropriate procedures this evening. So I'm thrilled to give an update around the Positive School Culture and Safety Department, particularly within, as Ms. Bunty stated, the health and safety goal. And I thank the superintendent and the Board of Education for such a commitment to health and safety, social-emotional learning of our students, so thank you so much. So we'll be focusing on the board priority two, as well as the board priority four, which is optimize capabilities. On the screen in front of you, where we also, I believe you have this in a handout, I outlined the specific strategic plan goal that I'm going to talk through today, which is 2.2 to deepen both internal and external relationships, partnerships, in order to improve our positive school culture practices. So this evening, the updates that I'll be providing for you are directly linked to that strategy 2.2. The measures, or in strategy, I'm sorry, is in strategy number four, optimize capabilities, that is directly related to our quality improvement, our QI work with our QISCL schools, so we continue to grow within our continuous improvement model. The measures within the department, and this is taken directly from our strategic plan, is within the measures that are highlighted or in that box, which is to increase our alternative learning centers, to also increase our capacity and capability of our school social workers, which, again, thank you for the fact that we are able to be committed to the work of social-emotional learning and have folks in the trenches in our schools to be able to support our teachers, students, and staff. And then measure 2D, to be able to increase the continuous improvement QI from three schools last year to eight schools this year. So moving along to strategy 2.2, which is to develop and deepen, and this, this update is on the internal piece, internal positive school culture practices. on the internal piece, internal positive school culture practices. We have increased our capability and capacity last year within the Department of Positive School Culture and Safety. I had six social workers who were funded through grant funding, Title IV funding, and with the expansion of the department and having our school social workers from DSS join us as part of positive school culture, we've been able to increase our capacity and capability, as well as the addition of 19 attended support specialists. This year, we are focusing on level-setting and class-training our school social workers, so that those with a strong PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support, or Social-Emotional Learning Focus, can teach those that have a strong truancy prevention focus, and we're learning together. The 19 attended support specialists help to support compliance within House Bill 410 and what the law dictates is necessary in order for us to remain in compliance with the law, to allow our social workers to do social work, to increase home visits, to do more groups, to build relationships with students, and it be less compliance-focused and more relationship-focused. We're increasing our capacity of ALC, and the last time I was here, I think I inadvertently called out Board Member Murawski about ISS, and he shared his time and in-school suspension. But as a district moving beyond ISS being a punitive place where kids sit and are removed from the classroom situation, an ALC, or an Alternative Learning Center, is an area based upon research that allows for behavioral reflection, time to work on academic tasks, to be able to access potentially a school social worker to help with conflict resolution. So then the students come back with an action plan of how they can do better when they go back to class. So, increasing our capacity within our alternative learning centers to provide an alternative to strict punishment types of consequences. And then we've also expanded our professional development for all staff. When I saw you in June, we talked about a training coming up with teachers, and we were able to train 4,000 staff in August in empathetic listening, building relationships, de-escalation, and social-emotional learning. And we're increasing our capacity across the five core service areas within our department. Training and raising knowledge and awareness is key, but then also being able to provide support within our schools across our service areas. So, increasing that training component, as well as uplifting our school social workers to provide support within the schools. In the next slide that you will see here, I love to say that Positive School Culture and Safety is the heart of the organization. So, in thinking about our external collaborative partnerships, I wanted to create a graphic for you, not only to highlight the initiatives that are in place, but how we are able to include perspectives across a range of key stakeholders. So, the Staff Assault Task Force, it is constituted with teachers, administrator, education support personnel, and community partners, for us to take a deep dive into looking at, what do we define as staff assault? What can we continue to do to provide supports, not only to the students, but to the teachers, and to decrease those incidences, so both staff and students feel safe coming to school every day? Our CPS Discipline Committee has been tasked with continuing with the SAC Committee to look at our student code of conduct and make it more restorative, less punitive, to make sure we're continuing to have clear outlines of an array of consequences, as well as making sure that we are clear in identifying our behavioral infractions, and including Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. Our CPS PBIS Committee has a wide range of partners, and this really helps us lead the work from a district level of what Positive Behavior Intervention Supports should be. The Ohio School Climate Grant, I'm happy to report that we received $50,000 at 410 schools. And we finished our first learning series of four, where we had a CFT teacher, SST-13, University of Cincinnati, and a CPS District employee, standing together, all teach, all learn, and we received wonderful feedback from the teachers with a focus of training and classroom management and support. But we need to do more, standing shoulder to shoulder, and not in silos, and providing our supports for teachers, so I'm excited to report that to you. And then last, you'll see Georgetown University School Justice Partnership. I am thrilled that in conjunction with Princeton City Schools and Northwest City Schools, we won a national competition to have Georgetown University come to us. And we are participating in a five-day training, where we get to learn more about diversionary programming, reducing school-to-prison pipeline, and learning with job and family services, legal aid, juvenile court, our school resource officers, as well as the three districts. And it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's exciting that we won the national competition, and we're first in line for this training. So under 4.1, this is where we're continuing to get better through Optimize Capabilities, through increased quality improvement training. So, my social workers, several of them went through training with Cincinnati Children's Hospital in quality improvement methodology. We've increased our QI schools from three to eight, and we've also made sure that we are redundantly communicating our processes around bully reporting, our PBIS plans, as well as discipline continuum. And the two pictures that I hope you can see there, one is from Mount Airy, and the other one is from Woodford, and I would like to recognize Dr. Ross Torpo, as Woodford PIDEA, was one of our awesome pioneer schools. And you can see there the list of the three pioneer schools from last year that participated, and then we have increased our capacity within the work for 2019-20. I set the goal in collaboration with Ms. Bunty and folks last year, that we were going to decrease in the three schools, we were going to decrease exclusionary consequences and lost instructional time by 50% or more. And I'm happy to report and give kudos to Dr. Torpo, that at Woodford, it far exceeded 50%, it was a decrease of almost 70%.
Wow.
So from our learning with our three pioneer schools, it's how can we go to scale? So how can we increase from K to three to K to six? And then how do we spread across additional schools? So that's the learning of this year, is how do we continue to build capacity within a building, and then spread it to other buildings? In terms of bully prevention updates, and Meg, if you want to step up while I go through these, I do want to share with you that we are continuing to seek areas of mentoring, peer mediation, and we're going to continue the girls' anti-bullying program this year, that you can see a picture from last year. We are piloting something called 363 text, and this is not for, it's not fully live yet, so I give that caveat, but at Taylor, Apple Taylor Elementary, we are piloting the use of a text app, so that students, for whatever reason, may not feel comfortable telling their teacher, telling an administrator, or pressing the bully notification button that they are not feeling safe during bullying. So we are going to pilot a text app to see if that is helpful, in order to gain information that then can be reported directly to principals, so that they can investigate. So it's meeting students where they are in their comfort level, moving forward. So we are piloting that this year. In addition, Meg Burrows is providing additional training for principals and assistant principals in bully prevention and bully reporting systems. We are providing additional training and community presentations on bully prevention. We are sharing resources with schools, community groups, and LSDMCs. Meg is a certified mental health provider, and we already have, how many?
Three.
Three trainings. And Meg provides support for students who are the target of bullying behaviors, as well as those who are exhibiting the bullying behavior and taking a whole-child approach. So in terms of updates, we are thrilled to share, within the work of Strategy Two, Health and Safety, as well as Optimize Capabilities, where we are thus far, and that we are keeping a laser focus, as my superintendent would say, on the measures within the work, so that we continue to serve all the families, students, and staff here in CPS.
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments? Wow, hands went up. I'll just start on this end, Ms. Bowles.
Thank you for your presentation. I like all of this. I have a question about Spencer and Western Hills, why was seven, eight only targeted? Because maybe they had high referrals for discipline and not the entire school? And for those high schools that you intend to build on the years, or for Spencer, go lower? Just trying to figure out what is the plan for expanding the program?
Yes, so they are in the first year within the QI work, so we wanted to be focused in our grade levels, and also it was the matter of the deep knowledge base and research base in social-emotional learning. There's a very strong research base in elementary as well, in six, eight within programming. We're going to use Second Step as part of the programming. There's less strong evidence-based support in certain programs in grades nine through 12. So part of it was making sure that we are using strong evidence-based programming. The second is, is that we want, we know that when we look at our discipline data, that we are seeing real concern in the middle school space of seven, eight, and being able to be proactive and helping students self-regulate their behavior in a new environment, we thought that that would, that isn't necessarily the case for Spencer, because they may have been there in earlier grades, but that was a rationale behind it. There's also some, although it may not be reflective in their discipline data, there are also some social-emotional concerns at Spencer, that we wanted to make sure gifted students oftentimes have some anxiety that we wanted to address as well.
Mr. Messor?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you, as a parent, to know this type of work is happening in our district. It's life-saving. You know, we hear in the news too often, children who are bullied, who may not have resources in their schools like you are providing to our children here at Cincinnati Public Schools, so thank you for that work. And I think the second question is, just maybe a little layer deeper in here, but, you know, there's been so much shared in social media, and there was a New York Times article about yoga, meditation, things that are not typical, but it's definitely, parents, I see people share it like, oh my gosh, this is amazing, oh wow. And I get the question, is, do they do this at CPS? So just curious if that's part of the programming that happens within the schools.
So that's an excellent question. So I don't, to my knowledge, there's not a systemic, everybody is doing yoga at a certain time or place. I know that there are certain schools that are finding ways to, innovative ways to teach students how to self-regulate. So whether that's mindful moments, there are apps that you can use, I've seen teachers that teach meditation in a way that's allowing the students to think clearly and take time to reflect. So, is there a district-wide approach? Not to my knowledge, but yes, I've seen that in the schools. So it's certainly something we can look at.
Yeah, and I think, just to follow up on that, I do think that would be interesting to explore, because if people are doing the one-offs, maybe it goes a little bit too much this way or this way, but what, some of the things that I read was, this is how they operate in this particular district. And, you know, there's an opportunity, no matter where you sit and what school or whatever, that's at, you know, very structured time, that's directed, people are trained on it. And, you know, I think, and that's more the meditation side, but then the yoga, and it was amazing, the data, as they shared, at least in the article, where it just elevated so many things outside of just their behavior. So, thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you for your report. I'm very excited about the Georgetown partnering, particularly since we've joined with some of our colleagues in the other school districts to bring that. That's remarkable. Focusing on the Ohio Report Card, in this group that's trying to help revise it, to your point in what you do, one of the suggestions that was very, very well-received last week, and it's being developed, is literally having a culture-climate part of the report card, because so much of what a lot of school districts do is not part of it, and virtually everything about the report card has something to do with achievement, but the achievement is so rested on the actual state tests, that we don't capture that kind of work. And so I'm really glad to see that. Another suggestion was Ohio Strategic Plan as well, being somehow, how is each district implementing that? But I'm just going to do one of my normal kind of things that I have to hold on to every time I hear it. When we talk about the school-to-prison pipeline, the reality is, it's a dropout-to-prison pipeline. If we look at the folks that are in jail, in any kind of incarcerated situation, the vast majority are kids, grown-ups that have dropped out, not necessarily finished high school, as well as obviously been themselves abused, or unable to read, or indeed have other sorts of things that have happened in their life. So, if we can keep the kids in school, we would reduce the number of people that are incarcerated in this city and country.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much for presenting today. We look forward to hearing more on the progress. Great. Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any kudos? Thank you. Any kudos?
Kudo man's not here.
Kudo man's not here. Mike Murawski, that's kudo man. Okay. All righty, Ms. Bates, I understand there are no retirees?
No retirees.
Okay, good, we'll move on. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak, and I will call them up in threes, so you can be prepared to come up. Marlena Brookfield, John Reeves, Ed Path.
There we go. Good evening, board, administration. We just talked a little bit about the health and safety piece, and I wanted to throw my two cents in there. So part of making sure our kids' health and safety is taken care of, for me, about a year ago, I just want to remind you that I asked about adding a resource guide or a directory to the student handbook for LGBTQ+ students, and their allies as well, because there's no shortage of research saying that just having a GSA, or some organization like that, a Gay-Straight Alliance, on campus significantly reduces rates of suicidal ideation and depression. And for me, as a student, an alum of West High, who was told by her principal, there was no way in hell he was going to let an organization like this exist on campus, I want to make sure that all our kids, regardless, have the ability to create safe spaces and have the resources they need to create the safe spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. John Reeves?
Hi, when I planned to come here and talk today, I didn't realize it would be such a big room, so it's a little intimidating being in theater than a conference room I was planning on. But again, my name's John Reeves. I'm a parent of a new kindergartner here at Cairns, and I wanted to start by saying thank you, guys, for opening this school. So between the building, the staff, and the teachers, it's been awesome, and my family loves having a place we can walk to, to come to a great school. But I'm also here to talk about an uncomfortable topic, about child sexual assault and prevention. I've had the chance to talk to some of you guys individually, but I wanted to take the chance today to talk to the broader group, to get us all on the same page. I'll start very quickly to give a little bit of a background on the topic and why I'm here today. I want to push for stronger preventative measures across Cincinnati Public Schools. I'm motivated both because of the terrible incidents we all see weekly on the news, but also I have family and friends who are child sexual assault survivors, and I've seen the impact of that. Before I started researching the preventative programs at Cincinnati Public, I wanted to first look at the data and understand the size of the problem. And what I learned was that child sexual assault in the United States has truly become an epidemic. For example, one dataset shows that one in 10 children are going to be sexually assaulted before they reach 18. And to try to understand the size of that, I looked in the medical field and said, what they say is that when the number of flu-caused deaths cross 7.7% in the country, we officially have an epidemic on our hand. So based on that, we truly have crossed into the epidemic stage. Today, I want to share three things with you. One is to inform you some of the research that a lot of folks have done so far, give a thank you, and ask for help. So the first is to talk about the research we've done to date. I initially started talking to some board members with Ryan and Eve, and then I've had a started talking to some board members with Ryan and Eve, and then I've had a chance to talk to the, at the policy committee that Ozzy and other folks were at. And that brings me to my thank you. I was able to talk to them last month, share some of these stats, and they listened and they were really engaged and understood. My ask for them was to identify a lead resource, to understand what a fully-formed strategy might look like, and then also to devote some funding to it. And, and I'll step back, because I think I left off an important piece, is before I went to that, that board, I had done some research myself and with some other parents here at Cairns, and then had connected with Paul McDowell in HR, and also Daniel Hoying in Legal. And what we felt we found was that CPS has a really strong reporting program for sexual abuse, and they have a really strong anti-bullying program, of course, that we all see. But what we couldn't find was an equally robust sexual assault prevention program. And I think that was the piece that sort of led me to, to ask the board, the policy board for the help on identifying resources and to make them a robust strategy. And so that brings me to, to my third piece, which was two asks for help for you guys today. One was to ask for your advocacy for this kind of work, and whatever it takes to get it to move forward. And second was support for the policy group with future funding, because we know it's going to take, it's going to take money to try to ring it forward. In the end, my goal for CPS is to really have a preventative program that's robust enough to answer the size of the epidemic we have on our hands. So I know I only have three minutes. So I'll, unless you have questions for me, I'll leave it at that with those two asks for help, and I appreciate you guys giving me your time to listen today.
Thank you. Ed, Ed Pfaff?
Yeah, hi. My name is Ed Pfaff. I'm a parent of two Hyde Park School children and also serving as the PTO president currently. Thank you, Ms. Bolton, Mr. Davis, Mr. Morosky, for listening to us at the most recent Student Achievement Committee meeting. I just wanted to give a few points of update to the rest of the board who weren't in attendance there. It's great to be here in Cairns. I see a lot of similarities with how this program is starting up and how Hyde Park reopened. Big community involvement, room to grow, but now our room to grow at Hyde Park is, is gone, and we've gone outside of our building walls and moved students across the street, which a friend of mine will talk more about tonight as well. But so we had a busy summer. We did a lot of growing. The school started, the school reopened back in 2012, 2013 with 130 students, preschoolers through second grade, and now we're up over 550 students. Fortunately, that allowed us to add an assistant principal this year, which has been an amazing help. We did a lot of moving classrooms throughout the building over the summer. It was a very busy summer. Our library space got converted into a first-grade classroom that's currently housing 17 six-year-olds. The library got placed on the back of the stage. So it'd be, if you were in a meeting at our school, the book, you'd be, have a bunch of bookshelves behind you. So it's, we're finding creative ways to keep what we have at the school going, but we're running out of space to do so. There's intervention specialists crammed into an office, three of them together, kind of sharing one space and are having a difficult time doing what it is they need to do. Many times, the small groups that need to get together for the intervention are meeting in the hallways without having adequate small group spaces. We almost lost the teachers' lounge this summer. If we had a fourth kindergarten class, the rumor I heard was that the teachers' lounge would be converted into a classroom. So the, the list kind of goes on and on, and that's just the space with classrooms. We also have the problems inside the gymnasium, the cafeteria with both, both seem to be undersized for the size of the school. Our sports teams for basketball regularly have to practice in other facilities, which leaves us financially, financially responsible for, through our athletic booster program. The cafeteria lunches start, well, thank you very much. I don't want to take up any more of your time. I know it's going to be a busy year for me. I'm sure I'll see you all back again soon at another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfaff. Our next three speakers, Kristen Hunter, Shauna Rodriguez, Derek Bowman, and I might as well call the fourth person Pamela Champion, Champ-ian. Kristen?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Hunter, and like Ed, I'm a parent of a second grader at Hyde Park School. We moved into the neighborhood back in 2010. The school hadn't opened yet. So it's been really cool to watch the school open and to grow to be a K through six program. The neat thing on our street is now young families are moving into our street because the Hyde Park School is a destination. They're moving into the neighborhood. They want their kids to go to that school, and that's been really amazing. My daughter is a second grader, and she is one of the group that gets to go across to the bank. They call it the Eagles' Nest Bank every day. There are 75 second graders that meet in the gym, and they do their mindful music, and they relax, and then they all have to cross the street. So they go in groups of 25, and they have five or six adults helping them guide across. It's Ohio 50, 561. It's a trucking route. There are so many trucks and cars trying to go through rush hours. The little seven-year-olds are crossing the street. So it's been a challenge for her. I asked her today, what would you like me to say at the board meeting that I'm going to go to? And she said, Mom, we'd be more comfortable at the school. We feel like we're disconnected at the bank. So it's definitely been challenging. The teachers have made the best of a tough situation. They really have. There's not much space over there. The, like Ed mentioned, the interventions, if the kids need to be pulled out of the classroom, there's just not space to do that. We have two bathrooms for 75 kids, plus six adults. That's two toilets, not two bathrooms, two toilets. That's very challenging. The kids also, we've organized a group that bring in snacks. So they get in at 7:45, and their lunch isn't until 12:30. So we bring in snacks for them. There's kids that can't bring in snacks, and parents bring in snacks. So we've definitely organized a big group to try to bring in snacks to keep the kids awake and alert before they do that afternoon crossover. We definitely know that Principal Sunderman and the teachers have made the best of the situation by having them go over to the bank, but we just don't think that's a good long-term situation. And as Ed mentioned, the cafeteria is very tiny. We would love to host community events at our school. The current gym right now only hosts about one or two classrooms and their parents at a time. And the neighborhood has a great playground. I don't know if y'all have seen our wonderful play yard. We want to also host events at our school, and we want to host the events in our cafeteria or in our gym. And our gym right now is about a half-sized gym. So we'd really like to bring the neighborhood back together, have it a place where all the people in the neighborhood can come and meet, and right now, we really aren't able to meet that. So we just ask that, we know that we've been on a couple of different agendas, and we ask that you can continue to consider to help us expand our wonderful school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Board, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Most of you know who I am. And for those who don't, my name is Shauna Rodriguez. My daughter Gabriella. Sorry.
Take your time.
I said I wasn't going to cry, but I lost, I lost Gabriella September 10, 2018 to a fatal hit, hit and run as she was trying to cross the street to go to school. We just celebrated, if you want to call it that, her year anniversary. And being without Gabby for a year has been pretty, pretty rough. But on the other end of that, I'm, I'm motivated and I'm proud of CPS. I'm, I'm proud of the, the city of Cincinnati. Changes are happening, and I, I know I, I wish they could come faster and, and more abundantly, but any change is better than no change. I try to, to go to city council meetings, and I, I try to be present everywhere I can because after losing Gabby, I, I'm, I'm trying to protect just one mom, one dad from getting the phone call that we, we received that morning. Derek Bowman is, has been amazing, and he's been so supportive of our family and the changes that he's helping to implement. And Vision Zero is an amazing thing. If we say not one, not one more child hit on their way to school, not one more mother walking to work, not one more, it is the most important thing in the world is to keep our kids safe when they're not, they're not causing trouble, they're not, they're, they're trying to go to school to get an education, to do better, to change the world. And Gabby wanted to change the world. So I thank all of you, because I, I've talked to several of you, and the support you've given us and the push you're, you're doing, it means a lot to my husband and I, and to Gabby's brothers, and I know to Gabby above. And most importantly, Derek, I love you, and I thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just, before Mr. Bowman speaks, he asked, because he's kind of been spearheading this community thing, he missed his bus or something happened, I don't know, bus or something, and he asked to speak. And there were other people who had asked and didn't miss, then didn't hit the cutoff for signing up, but we did add you, so you will get a chance to speak. Just wanted to be fair. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you. Shauna, thank you for those very, very kind words. Thank you. I'm Derek Bowman, for those that don't know me, recently retired police officer after 26 years and resident of Over the Rhine. And I would just like to take a moment, first of all, for folks that when we say Vision Zero, don't know what it means. This is a model that's been adopted by cities across, started out in Europe, now across the country, and here in the city of Cincinnati, where after many, many years of community activists and just folks in the neighborhoods getting pushed back when they're trying to make our streets safer, we've been designing our streets for basically cars racing through our neighborhoods at top speeds for 60 or 70 years now. And we see what the outcomes of this are. We have in the city of Cincinnati seen an increase of 50%, the number of pedestrians hit by cars over the last five years. That's leveled out this year. Hopefully, that has to do with some of our efforts. And so I greatly appreciate not only the city of Cincinnati adopting Vision Zero, which is a model that says that we don't have to accept this. We can fix the engineering of our streets. We can enhance enforcement. And the third big E of Vision Zero is education. I think that's where CPS can play a real leading role in helping us. We do not have to accept this carnage that is going on. We have, in the city of Cincinnati, almost 9,000 traffic crashes this year so far, to date. And like I said, when it's impacting our most vulnerable users, our kids, the elderly folks with disabilities trying to go about their daily lives, we can lead on this. And speaking of leading, that's what hopefully after the vote on this resolution tonight, you all will be doing. Because to my knowledge, there are only four school districts, four or five school districts, just a handful across the country that have adopted this model. Now, obviously, you can't go out and change all of the, everything in the streets. That's the city's role and Department of Transportation. But really playing a long-term role in helping to educate our young people, who will then help to educate the parents, and ultimately, just get people to slow down. We know at 40, at 40 miles an hour, there's a 90% chance that a pedestrian's killed. At 20 miles an hour, there's a 90% chance that they live. So ultimately, that's what this is all about. And I, I think this will also set the table for the schools and the city working more collaboratively, collaboratively going forward, and also just really changing the way our neighborhoods are. And our neighborhood schools play a big part of that, but making a place comfortable so that mom with a stroller can push the stroller down to the local coffee shop, can take the kids to school, can do that walking, riding a bike, or using a mobility device in a way that is comfortable. And that will make our city, our neighborhoods more attractive, and I think continue to grow our population and our enrollment in the schools. So I certainly encourage all of you to, to support this resolution. And really, outside of a couple of school districts on the east and west coast that have adopted this, we will be leading anywhere between Philadelphia and San Francisco in, in really becoming a model for this. And so I appreciate your time. Also, very quickly, Tom Frank from Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, Marlena Brookfield, Crystal Dandridge, board members Bates and Bolton, played a big role in the research going into this resolution. And of course, Shauna and Eduardo Rodriguez, for all of your great work around this. I know it's not easy, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Heather Couch and Melody Ty?
Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments. I sort of have a couple of questions in regards to the social emotional learning. That's part of our strategic plan. As you know, school counselors are trained in personal, social, emotional counseling, and college and career. And my, one of my first questions is, how are we capitalizing on the skills and expertise of our school counselors while we're going through this programming and developing it? And I'm really excited for it. I think the, we will see great, more improvement as a district, the longer we are continuing it year after year, and the more we're able to implement it district-wide. But also, back in February or March, myself and two other school counselors proposed, wrote a resolution to the school counselor guidance policy that lays out the roles and responsibilities. And I was wondering where that currently stands, since it's been a while, and I haven't heard anything further from it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest, because we're not in a position to respond to questions, you might want to direct your questions to Student Achievement. Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is, my name is Melody Ty, and I am the parent of a student that goes to Gamble Montessori High School. What I'm concerned about is credit recovery, IEP implementation, and compensatory hours that a lot of our children are not receiving, whether they're put in alternative to suspension or expulsion, or whether they're at the school themselves. And I'm just trying to find out what measures are being put into place to reassure parents like myself that our children will start receiving the same respect, guidance, and support, no matter the level or the severity of their IEP. Because my son, out of the past four years, I've had three years that my son has encountered issues that could have been avoided if programs were designed to make sure that his IEP has been implemented. I don't know who else I need to go to, but I came to this meeting because I need answers. And I know that far as credit recovery, there have been several students that have left Gamble because they could not get, their credit was messed with and toyed with as far as different teachers at the school. And my son has been going through the same thing. He was held back. He had 10th grade credits, and he was taking 11th grade classes. And because of that, he could not even take his SAT test. And now he's considered a 12th grader, but he never got the opportunity to take his SAT. So what, what do I do as a parent? Because my child has been looked over, and this has to stop with CPS.
Thank you. Superintendent, can we ask someone to?
Yes, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty. She oversees student services, and so she'll be able to help you. So she'll meet you in the back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you so much for your patience. Go. I'm sorry. Okay.
My name is Pamela Champion.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I was pretty moved when I heard you guys considering boundaries for schools. And so I wanted to offer a suggestion. You know, right now, You know, right now, the students listen and they take the same standardized test, and they're evaluated based on how well they either can regurgitate that, regurgitate that information, or how well they're connected with the information they were being taught. I was listening to something on, on the radio, and I heard her speaker from someplace, and I, I didn't write it down because I was driving and I never expected to try to share the information. But they had created schools that had themes, and someone mentioned that one of the schools has a culinary theme, I know that another school has an arts theme. But if they had medical themes and engineering themes and trade themes and writing and journalism, or sports mixed with science, if the high schools were developed with themes, then I think that it would adequately handle not just your boundary issues, but your diversity issues. The guy who talked about what they had done in their cities said that their schools just became more diverse, because the parents and the kids were more interested in the programming than they were in necessarily going to the school that was the closest to them. This child is artistic and drama, they like to read and write, they went to the school that aligned with that. This one was more scientific, or, and so I just thought that that would be something to consider, maybe long-term, but it's an alternative that I think that would, would improve behaviors. It's a focus on the student and their connection to the programming than it is focused on a school and the discipline and the boundaries. I think that would kind of eliminate a lot of the problems that we're having in the schools today. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We did add like four individuals, but we wanted to make sure that everybody, that we were fair in giving everybody an opportunity. Okay, so we do not have any board matters subjects tonight, so we'll move on. I'm going to ask Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton to introduce the resolution for board consideration and recommendation.
Yes, and I'll begin. This is a resolution regarding the development of a new Cincinnati Public School District-Wide Safe Routes to School Plan reflecting the principles of Vision Zero. And I, I believe that this is very important for you to hear, so Eve and I will read this resolution for you. Whereas Cincinnati's rising population and other factors have led to an increase in vehicle traffic and associated hazards, and whereas on average nearly one pedestrian is struck by a vehicle each and every day in the city of Cincinnati, and whereas pedestrian and cyclist injuries and deaths are highly concentrated on a subset of city streets, and these streets are disproportionately concentrated in low-income and communities of color, causing inequitable barriers to educational access and health that disproportionately burden a subset of schools. And whereas the design of our streets is the single most important factor in determining the perceived and actual safety for people walking, people on bikes, and other vulnerable users. And whereas vehicle speeds are highly predictive of injury severity for all road users, with pedestrians nine times more likely to die if hit by a vehicle traveling forty miles per hour compared to twenty miles per hour. And whereas children are more susceptible and vulnerable to traffic-related injuries as they are still developing cognitively and physically, and whereas transportation barriers include traffic safety have been shown to negatively and inequitably impact student attendance and influence school enrollment patterns. And whereas the city of Cincinnati has adopted the Vision Zero model with the goal of eliminating fatal and severe injury traffic crashes, particularly involving pedestrians. And whereas the district daily transports forty thousand students across the district's ninety-two square miles, and whereas other students and staff and families travel to and from schools vi, uh, daily via auto and/or by walking and bicycling, and...
Whereas the district's new community-designed strategic plan commits to putting the safety, physical, social, and emotional health of our students, staff at the forefront of everything we do. And whereas the district in two thousand twelve created Ohio's first district-wide Safe Routes to School. And whereas the district, the city of Cincinnati and the state of Ohio have recognized the need to have a new Safe Routes to School Plan. And whereas, lack of safety awareness is a barrier to the district's efforts to reduce vehicular congestion around schools and increase healthy, active, sustainable student travel to and from schools. And whereas Vision Zero provides a framework by which no loss of life is acceptable in our transportation system and which must systemically minimize the risk for young people and other vulnerable populations. And whereas the Cincinnati Public Schools has historically supported the individual elements of Vision Zero model and seeks to expand its support for Vision Zero through active partnership and collaboration with all engaged stakeholders, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Cincinnati Public School District adopts Vision Zero and the goal of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries on streets in the Cincinnati Public School District. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of Cincinnati Public School District supports existing efforts to reduce child traffic-related injuries through a Safe Routes to School program. Be it further resolved that through the work of the board, administration, and provided input by the community, parents and students, a newly-designed district-wide Safe Routes to School Plan will, by the end of 2020 calendar year, have been developed. And be it finally resolved that the input from our families and stakeholders will be augmented and informed by an active collaboration with Vision Zero partners, as well as all of the district's municipalities, townships, and villages in order to facilitate an adequate evaluation.
So moved, and I second. Any discussion or comments? Yes, can I begin? Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you to the group that Mr. Baumann enumerated that helped bring this resolution forward. Many thanks to the Rodriguez family for being such tireless advocates. And truly, this is one, one area that we are in complete agreement with the city on. So we can celebrate that. And, and this is an effort on behalf of the city, Administration Council, the school board, citizens, families, to come together with one vision for safety for our, our students and families in this city. Eve and I and Ms. Bowers attended Councilman Lansman's forum in Evanston, and there were representatives from all over the city, city council representatives with the same concerns. So this is a movement. This isn't just a resolution, this is a movement. Both the city manager and the police chief were there. So that was very significant, and they weren't asked to be there. They, that's what Councilman Lansman emphasized, they came because they wanted to be there. And it was very interesting, because I was talking to Chief Isaac afterwards, he believes that the biggest problem is distracted driving. So that's, that's something that we can, you know, really internally in, in the district with our children, we can emphasize. And also, you know, this is something that community members can be attentive to as well, but certainly there are other ways that we can, that we can address this problem. Education, this is something the school district can do while the council and, and city takes on enforcement. One thing that we all can do, and that President Sellers discussed at our last meeting, is starting an active citywide campaign to, to create awareness around this, around vehicle assaults, and to reduce that, to reduce speed, to reduce distracted driving, reduce aggressive driving. So to kick this off, and this is a grassroots movement. We, we hope to organize, and have begun the organization, on October the second of our schools and communities to come out visibly with signs on National Walk to School Day. So we would, this is not just a Cincinnati event, this will be an event across the country, where, where families and students and teachers and staff will be promoting safe routes to school. And this will be addressed during the LSDMC principal meeting by Ms. Bolton. But, but each school can design their own plan, a safe plan and a plan that doesn't take away from education, either something before school or after school, but with signs, kind of like our campaigns, our levy campaigns where we have honking waves. And this would be the first of a pattern of, of visibility events. So kickoff would be October second, and we'll be discussing this with our, with our leadership of our schools. And hopefully, this is something that the community can gather around, mobilize around, and it can grow, because we need to change the culture of safety in this city. It's not a city where vehicles rule, it's a city where we, we share the streets and we have respect for one another.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded, any other discussion? I would like to say, and thank you all for presenting, and I know a lot of work went into this, but I'm a little disappointed that we didn't share the presentation of it as a unit, as a, we're a board and we've done this in the past, and I think to show unity as a board, it would have been nice, but it's a good resolution, not taking anything away from that. So anyway, it's been seconded, it's been motioned and seconded, and discussed. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Motion carries, resolution is passed. And we want to thank all the people, Ms. Bates and, and Ms. Bolton, and I know Ms. Bowers all, and the other board members for at least paying attention and recognizing the importance of this resolution, and to all of you all who helped support this. So thank you very much. Okay.
Ms. Bolton?
I think that, I think it's particularly important that it's community-driven, it's the teachers' union-driven, our neighborhoods-driven, but I, I think we must, of course, and I know there's a way to do this, upon passage of a resolution moving forward indeed to dedicate it to the Rodriguezes.
Absolutely, absolutely, we can do that. Thank you. Mr. Davis, please present the following resolution.
A resolution approving yellow bus, bus stops, I'm sorry, let me start over. A resolution approving yellow school bus stops for the 2019-20 school year. I present this resolution as written for adoption.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I have a, a question, and I ask it every year, and this year particularly, it may sound a little, may resonate more. On the passage of these, which we're required by law to do, I always seek the assurance that our security department and security experts have approved the bus stops. And not just that it's a transportation or that others, you know, the stops are where it's best, or more suitable for the transportation people. And so I just, again, as I always do every year, seek the assurance from the administration that our own security and safety experts have approved these bus stops.
So we first looked at those bus stops that parents had major concerns regarding safety as we took in the calls from parents and we logged that. In the spirit of transparency, the security team has not reviewed every single bus stop within our district, so we set a priority to the work. And so we've looked at, again, those that have come into us as a concern from our parents, but we will ensure that we look at the bus stops. There are just quite a few, and they change, they're changing on a reroute basis, on a week-by-week basis.
Chair?
Yes.
If there, is there a process, and this year particularly, there were a lot of changes because of the significant increase in enrollment and, and kind of a moving, if you will, so many students, and also our attempts to be more fiscally wise, and, and also some of the other considerations that went into the transportation piece. Is there a process by which these bus stops, as they are chang, or even as they were initially done, were approved by our, our folks? And then as it gets through the changing, if they, if there's a step that needs to go through before it's announced?
So I'm not aware that the security reviewed the bus stops before they were set, but it's definitely something that we will look at.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, motion carries.
Ms. Bowers, please present the following resolution.
A resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2019 through 2020 school year. I'm going to read the resolution in its entirety. Whereas the city of Cincinnati, whereas the Cincinnati City School District has identified one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six pupils to be residents of this school district and eligible for transportation services. Whereas after, should I start over? Whereas after a careful evaluation of all available options, it has been determined that it is impractical to provide transportation for these students to their selected schools. And whereas the following factors as identified on Ohio Revised Code, three, three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven point oh-two have been considered on a student-by-student basis. One, the time and distance required to provide the transportation. Two, the number of pupils to be transported. Three, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration. Four, whether similar or equivalent services provided to other pupils eligible for transportation. Five, whether and to what extent the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Six, whether other reimbursable types of transportation are available. And whereas the option of offering payment in lieu of transportation is provided in Ohio Revised Code. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city board of education, in accordance to Ohio Revised Code, three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven point oh-two, and board policy eighty-six hundred point oh-two, declares one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six pupils impractical for transportation. And be it finally resolved that the city board of education approves the declaration of impractical to transportation for the identified students for the 2019 through 2020 school year. I, I present this policy for adoption as written.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I would like to know how the one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six pupils that are impractical for transportation compares to the number of students that were impractical for transportation last year?
Mr. Johnson, you can join me. I believe last year the number was around fifteen hundred, is that correct?
And what were the additional routes that were eliminated? The three hundred students that are not receiving transportation?
The routes that were eliminated?
Yes.
Um, no routes were technically eliminated. Routes, depending on where the student population lives at, were reorganized, the capture of the most majority of those students. So if we have a population of students in one area, but then we have a greater population going to that school in another area, that bus was then diverted to get the mass majority of the students, given the equipment that we have.
Yeah, and I'm uncomfortable because those, I, I've received complaints... Yeah, and I'm uncomfortable because I've received complaints from families that are excluded from transportation that haven't been in years past. And I know it's been quite a while since I was on the state board, but we would actually receive the statewide list of those who did not receive transportation. I just think that this policy, and I'm sorry I missed the meeting because I was out of town, but it's pretty broad and doesn't really provide information that I feel comfortable supporting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates? No. Ms. Bolton?
Good point of question.
Yes, Ms. Bolton.
This is not coming from, Mr. Davis just mentioned to me, this is not coming from a board committee?
Can we speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not, it apparently didn't come from a board committee. This is an administrative resolution.
Didn't come from policy?
Just, no.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers?
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Little bit of confusion there, but thank you, we needed that clarification though. I think I assumed too that it came from policy, but it's fine. We're good. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. So we're pulling up my slides right now, and you and Pam. Not sure where to point. There we go. All right. So I'd like to recognize Rockdale students and South Avondale students have the opportunity to work out with the Bengals. They also had a chance to be cheered on by the Bengal cheerleaders, which was very, I'm sure, encouraging to them. So they all looked very happy as they were humping and humping and working out. And this is all under the Bengals Play 60 program, which we support every day, you know, to get our kids exercising and moving. Also, I'd like to acknowledge and give congratulations to Dr. Jennifer Williams, who is our science manager for the district. She was recognized as a champion for change because of the outstanding work that she has done on the board-approved comprehensive health and wellness curriculum that CPS students take apart in. So big kudos for Dr. Williams. Carson School is celebrating its kickoff to their new program focused under Vision 2020, World World with Project-Based Learning. And so our kids are engaged in hands-on activities, empowering our students to learn in a lot of different ways, and so we want to congratulate that school and acknowledge the new principal, Teres Thomas. And last, we'd like to also highlight Reese Price, another one of our Vision 2020 schools, which has a focus on expeditionary learning. So there are a couple other schools within our district that has this focus. This program is developed by the Harvard Graduate School of Education and the Outwork Bound USA organization. So I'd like to just highlight what's going on in a couple of our key schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates? Aye. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
No discussion.
Ms. Wagner? Mrs. Bates? Aye. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Okay. Inquiries or updates? Anybody have inquiries or updates to provide?
Ms. Bolton? Just a very quick update regarding the effort by the Urban Network to develop a group of consensus recommendations for the ad hoc legislative committee that is scheduled by the end of December to present to the Ohio Department of Ed and the State Board some recommendations for changes to the state report card. I mentioned one of them, or two of them, is adding columns, if you will, that talk about the actual strategic plan, not ours, but the state's, and how we are matching to what they've suggested, as well as, there was a great deal of interest in having a significant effort regarding culture, climate, as part of the report card, which we think would be very beneficial. Both of those things, I think, would also help Cincinnati Public. And the group worked for two days, and we're scheduled to work for a couple more days, a little bit later next month, but appreciate the board allowing me to go, and more particularly though, we have, our southern contingent is Cincinnati Public, Winton Woods, and Lachlan. And so the various regions of the state have their particular ones, and we will be coming together to work there. So I appreciate our colleagues in the other districts.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yes, I just have an update. Those of you who know me know I have a secret addiction to trees, and as you may know, the city each year has the urban forestry tree distribution, and we put in a request, and were granted two trees for every one of our CPS schools. And so those will be coordinated by our facilities team, and we'll be arranging for our students to actually plant those on our sites, and talk about the importance of trees, et cetera. So I think that's really exciting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other inquiry or update? Thank you. Assignments? Any assignments? Better say it before I hit the gavel. Okay. Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.